Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. I was gonna start with Kimberly Sabatini, but he's not here, so I'll push you off a second, okay? Okay, so then we'll start with James and Melanie Matero. This is appeal number 892 for variance. A variance for this property approved on October 7th, 1996. Appeal number 566 for the encroachment into the setback of the side and rear deck with condition states. No further enlargement or reconfiguration of the structure is authorized without a building permit and our zoning approval as needed. The proposed alteration in addition to the rear and side deck will enlarge and reconfigure the existing decks. This will require a variance from the zoning board. Location is 32 Hudson River Lane Garrison in a R80 district. Okay. First, I got two letters I want to give from neighbors regarding this that wouldn't be able to be here. Want to take these two for tonight? Okay, I want to read them into the record first, so everybody has it. Let me just give the copies to... Yeah, I'll give you one too. Two more, hold on. Okay. First letter is from Dorothy Lang, L-A-N-G, at 36 Hudson River Lane. It's dated January 15th. To members of the zoning board of appeals, I am sending you this letter in support of Jim and Melanie Matero's application for variances to make renovations to their home at 32 Hudson River Lane. I have spoken to them and reviewed their proposed plans. I believe their project will not only significantly reduce any impact of future flooding, but will also enhance the neighborhood as a whole, both aesthetically and by increasing our overall property values. I sincerely hope all the neighbors feel this way, so that approval can be swift, allowing the majority of the outside work to be done in the spring, reducing the construction noise during our beautiful summer on the river. Sincerely, Dorothy Lang. The second letter is from Kair Martin. Hello. We are homeowners at 34 Hudson River Lane in Garrison. We will not be able to attend the upcoming public hearing about the renovations to the house next door, so I am writing you to let you know that we are in support of the project. We have seen the plans and discussed with the Materos, the improvements they wish to make on their house seem well within the limits of what other houses on the street have already done on similar land spaces, as well as being particularly vital for them to prevent future flood damage. We're hoping the other neighbors are equally supportive and would love to see this project be completed on schedule. Please feel free to reach out if there's anything we can do to help. Seeley Kair Martin and Alfonso Romero. Okay. With that, is the applicant here? Put him up, dressed... Come up by the microphone, give your name and your address, and tell us a little bit what you're trying to do here.
My name is Melanie Matero. I live at 32 Hudson River Lane. We were severely impacted by Superstorm Sandy, but because we have a basement that is partially submerged and partially above ground, the majority of the damage was to mechanicals. We lost water systems and electrical panels and basically all the mechanicals. So what we are proposing to do is create an attic space that can house the mechanicals and can store personal items that you would typically store in a basement, but obviously we don't want to do that. So that's the initial intent of what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay. Did you have the architect or the builder here?
I have the general contractor.
Okay, I'd like to ask him some questions. Thank you very much. Hi, I know you didn't have the meetings last month, so you dropped them off the next day, and I mailed them out, so they have ample time. I just have a couple of questions. It looks like you're staying with the original footprint?
Correct.
And not going out at the footprint at all?
There's a couple cantilevers. We're cantilevering...
Where?
Eighteen inches.
In the front?
There's 24 in the front and 18 to the south.
Okay, so it's basically like a dormer type of thing, or...
Yeah, it's just a... Basically, we're just extending the first floor and just cantilevering it past the foundation.
Okay. You're not putting a whole second floor or third floor?
No, there's no livable space on the attic area.
Okay. And I got an email from someone, something, something, demolish... You're not demolishing this house. This is just, you're doing what's on here, right?
Correct. We're just removing the roof.
Good, okay. Now, as far as the deck, the original deck, the existing deck, it looks like you're shrinking the size of it.
Correct.
Okay. It looks like you're going down to an eight by 12?
It's roughly, I think, about 12 by 12.
12 by 12?
And it's... That section of the deck is actually existing.
Okay.
It's gonna be removed and brought to code, but that's actually there.
Right, but that deck is already there?
It's already there.
At this point in time?
Yep.
So you're pretty much removing more than 50% of the deck?
Oh, well more, because it also wraps around the south side of the house.
Okay, so at least, when I'm looking at it now, at least probably 60, 70% of the deck is being removed?
Correct.
Okay. And the deck is not gonna extend out any further?
Nope.
Than the current deck that's there now?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Yes. The cantilever part that's on the back of the house, how wide is that?
On the south side?
Yeah, this side.
That's the front side of the house. That's 24 inches.
Excuse me?
Two feet.
Okay.
24 inches.
Okay. And how, you're not extending, you're not making the height of the ceiling, the roof line?
The roof line is, I think, 26 and a half feet now.
26 and a half feet. So that's well within the guideline.
Yeah, I believe it's 40 feet.
Okay. It looks like you're putting windows in the back, you're taking off the deck and you're putting a couple of windows in.
Yeah, there's doors there, and they're gonna come windows and...
Right. Now, what are you gonna put up in this utility room, basically? What are you gonna... Equipment's gonna go up there, or what?
Yeah, it's gonna go up there. The electric panel's gonna move to the first floor. The oil burner, heating source, will be moved to the attic, as well as the water softening system.
Okay, so the oil burner's going up there too?
Yes.
And heating, you know, this is way... Because I know that the basement is below the flood line.
Yeah, the basement is. First floor isn't.
Right, and I know they got hit during Sandy pretty hard, I would guess, like a lot of us got hit, I guess, or something like that. Okay. Does anybody have any questions, board members on anything?
What's the change in the total height gonna be?
From the existing?
Yes.
I'm not too sure what the existing elevation is right now.
Are you... Is it a full floor that's being added?
No.
Or just a little bit of space?
No. Well, the dormers are creating basically an eight-foot ceiling up there, but the rest is just raising the ridge.
Is there anywhere in these drawings, say, the total height?
Of the existing?
Yes.
The existing, I'm not too sure, but there is a new elevations there.
Well, I got the total height at the roof line, which is well within... It's 20...
Okay.
The new height?
The dormer, correct.
Yeah.
Right. Dormer's right. I guess it's gonna, you're gonna peak off on the top. Is that what you're doing?
Yeah.
Okay. You're putting two dorm... One dormer in the front, dormer in the back, and you're gonna peak off on the top. Okay. And what are you doing on the side? You're not changing the stairs? You're changing the stairs on the side?
Oh, in the side deck area?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's... Right now, it's part of the west side deck wraps around the house, so that whole middle section of the deck, call it, is coming down. That back entry or that side entry will be rebuilt as a platform with stairs. The same size it is now, just not as... Doesn't wrap around your whole...
No, it's gonna wrap around, so you're still just gonna... Okay.
I think it comes out five foot six, and it's gonna stay.
When changes, they gotta put in smaller plans. To measure... To have smaller plans, smaller blueprints. Here's a good... Okay. And I see that the dormers you're putting on are still within the footprint?
Correct.
Okay. So you're not going anywhere out within the property line, front, side, back, or anything else like that?
No.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on it? Plans or any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stick around, you might have a few questions. Go ahead.
Yeah, if I can just...
Mr. Carr?
Yeah, I mean, just to clarify, because obviously we'll have to incorporate numbers into a resolution. I'm looking at what's been identified as sheet two of two. You can refer to it, I just wanna... Where it says five foot six, five foot six, five nine, and then six, is that referring to the sideline setbacks on the north?
That is on the north, yes.
Okay. And the other setbacks, well, that would be the south?
The south, right.
Okay, so those would be the proposed setbacks that you're looking for?
Correct. The river being here, Metro North being here.
It's pretty much the same setbacks as what they had under the old variance.
Only on the back it's different.
Correct?
Only the back is different, really.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, are you proposing any rear yard setbacks?
No.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Hang around, you might have some more questions, I'm sure. Does anybody in the audience that'd like to speak to this?
Yes.
You come up, please.
Sir, is there anything about the plans here as a reference?
Oh, sure. Go on, too. I'm sorry, you are Mrs.?
I'm Dana Raymond, and this is my husband Kevin Raymond.
Okay. I'm gonna have to ask you to speak into the microphone, so that she can get it on the thing, if that's okay. Get yourself all set up.
Thank you.
Take your time.
My husband is Kevin Raymond. We reside directly to the north of the Materos.
Okay, you spoke on the phone.
We spoke on the phone. I sent you some emails, and we learned about this through the ZBAs.
All right, let me explain to that. Here's the letter here.
Yeah.
That was to go to you. It was sent to you on January 15th, and it was returned by the post office. It says, "Returned to sender, no mail receptacle, and unable to forward."
We have two mailboxes.
This is your mailman. No, this is from the post office. This is... It says, "Returned to sender, no mail receptacle, unable to forward."
What's the address?
28 Hudson River Lane.
We have two mailboxes out there.
I know. Maybe you ought to speak to your... Speak to your mailman when you get a chance.
Maybe I should get a post office box.
Okay, but it's not the town's fault, so just so you understand.
That's good to know. That's good to know.
Okay. Now, I guess, I think the best way to... Because I know you sent me a four-page...
I have cut it down a lot.
I know. You cut it down, okay.
Yeah, I cut it down a lot.
Then let's address your issues one by one.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. We're very happy that the Materos have decided to renovate their fishing shack from the 1940s, because it definitely needs improvement. When we receive these plans, they feel to us a bit confusing and a bit incomplete.
Okay.
And we have several questions.
Okay.
Let me start with the attic space.
Attic space, okay.
It's my understanding that when you have an eight-foot-high ceiling, it becomes habitable space. It's also insulated, and it's also sheet rocked. There's no ventilation on the sides of the house, which you typically would have in an attic space. They do have vent ridges, but if you look at the sections, the attic is enclosed, and it's a conditioned space. So the vent ridges, I'm not quite sure what they're ventilating. The other side of the dormer area is six feet, okay? So we have a habitable side, and we have a non-habitable side. I have a few questions, and I was hoping to talk to the design professional or the structural engineer, but if it's acceptable to speak to Michael about it, since he's building the house, I'd like to ask a few more questions.
Well, just your questions to the board, and then I'll ask Kim.
There's one section... There's two sections, is longitude and lengthwise, so northeast and, I'm sorry, north-south and east-west. The attic area appears to be sheet rocked. My question is, when you're in their living space and you look up at this new area, are you looking at an entirely enclosed space, and is the only access to this space through a tiny crawl space? Learning now, yeah?
Okay, so let's do one at a time. So you're talking about where you're gonna put the utilities thing? Where are you gonna put the equipment?
My question is, is this attic space that is not a full floor? Because it's a double-height space. There's the sub-basement that is half underground and half above ground, which got flooded. We all got flooded. The next is their living space.
Correct.
Okay, so let's call that the second floor.
Well, no, we're not gonna call it the second floor, because that's a sub-basement.
No, no, the next floor is where they live.
First floor is where they live.
Okay, first floor.
Okay.
Then there's the attic space. When you're on the first floor, you have a double-height space, so the attic is kind of skirting around. It's in the floor plans, you could see it. So my question is, is when you look up, am I able to see into this attic space, or is the only access to this space through the little hatch that they are providing? In other words, is there a balcony railing where you're looking down onto the space? Because...
Okay, let's start with that.
Okay.
Mr. Carr, is there a balcony railing?
No.
No?
The end of the main living space that is walled will be walled and sheet rocked, so the attic space is fully enclosed.
It's fully enclosed, okay.
Okay, next question.
Well, Michael answered one question. The boiler that's in the basement, oil, I believe?
Yes, it's oil.
And is going to be up in the attic space? That sounds a little odd, and I'm just wondering, whatever we have, you know, if it's propane or it's oil, it needs to be fed, and it needs to be fed by, you know, Downy or Pedala. So how do you actually do that? And it sounds to me that oil burning in a wood-framed house, there's gotta be something about that that could be a little frightening.
Well, that would be towards the building department, you know?
Right.
Let's go slow.
But it just seemed a little...
Let's go slow.
Okay.
Because I'm not that quick, okay? So that would be with the building department. So if he's doing something wrong there, the building inspector will stop him. The building inspector has to come down and check every... If it's approved, I'm not saying this is approved.
Right.
I'm saying if it's approved, the building inspector will be down there at every step of the way, believe me. They'll be there every step of the way. If there's anything illegal, the building inspector... It's not for us to determine that type of thing.
What would be appreciated is understanding why there are two dormers with windows, if there's no benefit to anybody, because the space is enclosed. In other words, are the windows there and the light and the air for their mechanical equipment only? The windows will not shine light down into their living space. And I ask this question because I would like to know if this area is going to be used for bedrooms now, or are they intending to do that in the future?
Is the area's gonna be used for bedrooms?
No.
Okay.
And the original design of the house called for no dormers. The problem was the roof was so massive.
Right.
Because of the run, the owners decided to try to dress it up.
Why don't you step up here? I'm sorry, step up here, if you wish. She can't hear you, I guess, for the TV. I understand that. Okay, maybe stand a little bit to the side there. Okay, go ahead.
The original concept was without dormers. The dormers were added because the roof itself was so large, and what it looked like was basically a big, flat plane. It was a big roof. So the dormers were added to break up that roof plane.
Okay.
So there's no intention to use this space in the future for habitable space?
No, there's no staircase going to it. It's nothing but an attic entrance.
Okay. With the answer to that question, and we have a few more.
Sure. Take your time.
Okay. We object to the height, and I've over...
The height of what?
The height of the house, because it is almost adding an entire story for 666 square feet of storage, so...
Okay, I understand you're just asking to the height, but the height was just well within...
I know it is.
The town rooms, and they don't have a second story.
Okay, well, I'm...
Are you live next door, correct?
Yes, we do.
You have a second story.
But we have a master suite and an office up there.
Right, but I'm saying, but you do have a second story.
We do. It was bought that way.
All right, okay, next question.
Okay. I wonder if you could provide for us a plan, a third-floor plan, and I wonder if you could provide for us a demo plan, so I can understand what it is that us as neighbors 20 feet away can expect? Because when I look at the sections, I believe the sections were done by Michael Carr, the engineer, and I'm not sure who did the design of this house. I think it might have, in a conversation with Melanie way back, it was a student. But the sections seem to... Can you verify for me if the framing for the basement area is new, or is it existing? And may I show you one of the plans?
Yeah, what do you mean, the floor?
Okay, this floor here. It's a little bit unclear if this is new construction or not.
No, that's existing.
That's existing.
Yep.
So, okay?
Okay, next question.
Next question.
You are keeping the existing living floor enclosure to the house, even though...
Okay.
Okay. The site plans done by Glenn. Glenn was our consultant for a year and a half, and most of the site plans that we have show, you know, he's working on our house, so we have a full site plan of our house, our garage, and our deck, and then we have partial plan of our neighbors. The whole reason for a meeting like this is so that we could see what our neighbors are doing and how it impacts us. Yet the site plan from 1996 that Beattie and Watson then revised in, I believe, December of 2015 doesn't show our home or our deck, and we would like to see that.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but when they give us a survey, it doesn't have to really show the houses next door.
It shows partially.
I know, but it doesn't have to show anything. All it has to do is show the property that we're talking about.
But we're asking to see it, because this is about sightlines, and everyone down on those...
You're asking to see your house?
Yes, on their plans, as it relates to the decks.
I'm not gonna demand that. I just don't, I don't see the reason for it.
It's about sightlines to the river.
Okay, let's talk about the sightlines to the river. What do you think that's being done here that will object to... Sure, Kim.
Okay, so the neighbor's on the other side, the house is there, but our house is not.
Well, that's just the way it was done, but I understand what... He could, let me explain to you. He could come here with a survey and just his piece of property and just his house, nobody else's.
But that's not showing the surrounding context, and the surrounding context is important to us.
Correct, but what we do is we notify everybody, okay? I'm not gonna, I wouldn't expect him to have like a site plan of all the houses...
No, I'm not asking for that.
That are connected to who we sent letters to.
I'm not asking for that.
Right.
I'm asking to have the same consideration that has been shown on this plan to the neighbor to the south for us.
Okay. What would that accomplish here?
What it would accomplish is to be sure and certain that the deck isn't extending out very far, because if you notice on the plans, they don't dimension the deck.
Okay. They have to mention it, though.
I can just briefly, I mean, add on this. I mean, just to address, I mean, those concerns, maybe, hopefully this'll be helpful. In 1996, the reason why we're here, just to give some background, is they obtained side-yard variances in 1996 with the condition that no further, you know, reconstruction, et cetera, without zoning board approval. That's why they were referred here for the additions that they're making. As I understand it, and perhaps the applicant can reconfirm, that they are not increasing the non-conformity with any side-yard setbacks, that they're not going further into either the north or the south.
Is that written anywhere? Because I couldn't find it.
Well, I think it's the numbers that were provided on their map. So they're not increased, they're not going further into any side-yards. They're building within the same footprint, and actually, as I understand the applicant, and they can correct me, I believe the footprint on the south side yard will actually be smaller.
Okay, so...
So they're not asking for any further variances, they're simply asking to reconstruct with what they have, but not asking for any further variances.
Okay, so to the west, where that deck is, it's not going to be extended out any further than it is right now?
No, it's not.
Is that correct?
No, it's not, correct.
Okay, that's great.
Actually, it's gonna be smaller. You should be happy, it'll be smaller. Less deck.
Well, not necessarily. I want them to have their deck. I just wanna understand it, because they haven't been...
No, I know, it's not gonna, it's not gonna interfere with your wants. I understand your question, and it is the same deck that's there now. It's just gonna be, it will be the same coming out, same, went to the same way.
Okay. On the north facade...
Sure.
There's only one window, and the house is a lot taller now. There's an eve, overhang, onto, not onto our property, but there's an eve. On the south side of the house, there is no eve. We have one window on that facade, so if you think about the scale of this house now with vinyl siding, we have this overhang that kind of adds to it being very ominous, and we would like to know why it is there, and why it's not there on the south, what its function is.
As far as the windows being there?
No, no, not the window.
Or the overhang.
This guy here.
I don't know, I have to talk to the designer, I don't know why it's designed with one on one side and not on the other.
Well, we asked that it be, it has no function, which I don't know why. It seems a little superfluous, and it adds to being very ominous in scale.
You don't want, what do you want removed?
What do you want removed?
I'm looking at...
The whole thing?
It's elevation, east elevation proposed. So it's at the top left of sheet ST4.
Okay.
And if you see, on this side of the house, the roof line is flush, and on this side of the house, it comes out.
Can you hold that up, because I can't see what you're referring to?[1624.81]
Oh, it's just still the same height, though.
It's still the same height.
Oh, you're talking about a little overhang there, I see, okay.
Yeah, but this is really what we're looking for.
Yeah, but it's still within the footprint.
It is within the footprint, but I'm asking why it's there.
Well, that's the way they want it. That's the way they designed it. I mean, you know, I mean, you just, you can't, you know, you can't pick on somebody's houses and say, "I don't like it."
Can I just respond to that?
Well, I'm trying not to do that.
Okay, go ahead.
As far as that goes, we would add it to the other side, because I don't ever want to build a house that doesn't have an overhang, otherwise you can have water infiltration. So that might be just a design flaw, but that would get added to the other side of the house regardless.
Okay, so maybe I brought up a good point, okay?
Okay.
We wouldn't want to have a house, we want to have the face of flat with the siding.
And you'd have to deal with the building inspector, why not?
Yeah, we could just do a revise strong.
Okay, so you won, you won that one.
You know what?
Go ahead.
What we're here for is to ask questions.
Correct.
We don't feel that we've had enough information.
Listen, you've been given, I gave you plenty of time, and I gave you, I went out of my way, I gave you copies of everything, right? I dropped them off at your home and all that.
You certainly did.
I certainly did, you know, I'm trying to help, believe me, nobody's here to cut you short. Now, go ahead.
The last question that I believe I have, I'd like to look over my notes, but there's only one elevation marker for this new house.
Roof line, you're talking about height?
Yes, at the ridge line, and it reads twenty-five feet six approximately.
No, the one I, the one I saw, let me see. I saw it, it's on page, uh...
ST four.
ST four. Does it look, so it says twenty-six point five.
This says twenty-six feet, five inches approximately.
Approximately, yeah.
Well, that just adds a little concern in regards to that attic space.
Well, then we can, we can do it, and we could say that it can't be any higher than twenty-six point five.
Yeah, we would request, you know, that it'd be certified by a design professional or something, yeah.
Well, the building inspector looks at that, you know, I mean, so we got, as long as it's within the height line of these code, it's twenty-six point five approximately. Now, Adam, could we make it part of the thing that can't be any higher than that? I mean, is that...
I wouldn't vote for it if it was an approximate.
Okay, so we say twenty-six point five, is that possible to put that in there?
Well, I mean, they're building it within the, within the maximum height limit of the zoning code.
Correct.
They don't need, they don't need a height variance.
Right.
I mean, understand, we're just a board of limited jurisdiction, we can kind of might...
But it's a storage space, and it's almost doubling in height, so we just want to make sure it doesn't go up to thirty feet. I mean, it's a storage space, you know?
Well, I mean, if it's within the code, in other words, it has to conform with the limitations of the zoning code, otherwise they will not get a building permit, they will not get a certificate of occupancy.
Okay. I wonder if they could talk about... Are you going to be conditioning the attic space? How do you...
I'm sorry, what was that question?
Are you going to be conditioning the attic space?
No.
No, okay.
It will be insulated.
All right.
And most of that attic space is roof rafters, which are going to be insulated.
Okay, are you going for a septic permit, for a new septic? I mean, the existing...
There's no, there's no bedrooms being added.
I know, but the existing septic is as old as the house.
Well, there's a lot of old septics. If we got all the old septics to change in Phillips Town, it would cost the people a fortune. But he's not putting any bedrooms, so there's no need a health department.
Okay, I just, I just have to wonder why you're keeping the first floor framing of an old house where it's four inches in thickness, I don't even know if that's the code, but ripping the roof off and not just taking the whole thing down. I mean, I think I do know why, but, you know, it's a little baffling.
Well, that's, that's up to them and the building department, really.
Yeah, okay, well, I think my questions have all been answered. Kevin, do you have anything?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else, any other questions, want to speak?
Hi.
Uh, your name and address, please.
My name is Sean Sullivan. I live at eight Hudson River Lane.
Okay.
I've lived there for thirty-seven years. I'm definitely in support of the Materos getting their variances. We've lived through Hurricane Sandy and Irene and Lee, and they need relief with the mechanicals with their building, with their home. I think their plan is well within a reasonable amount of addition, and it's going to improve the property values of their home and all of our homes that are down there, so just want to speak in favor of the variance being approved.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else want to speak? Any audience? All right, any questions, you have any more questions? Any questions?
The only thing, my only concern is the approximate. If we put in a, put in a condition that's maximum height would be, I would, I would feel more comfortable, and let me tell you why. Because on Hudson River Lane, when I was chairman, we had a lot of issues with height, and we had one specifically with a resident who put in a plan, didn't put in heights, and all of a sudden it was a three-story building. And I just don't want to, even though these people are not going to do that, I would just, I would just make me feel more comfortable if we had it nailed down.
Okay, let me explain something. First of all, there's five people on the board, okay? So one person is ill, and the second person is celebrating his Chinese New Year's, so there's only three. So it has to be an anonymous vote. All three have to decide, can't be a two-to-one thing, it has to be three-to-one thing. So if that's his objecting, could that be put in the, is that possible, or is that legal to put it in there? I guess is my question.
Well, they're not seeking height variance, my, if there's a particular concern, my, and it's kind of belts and suspenders, certainly we can add a condition that the height must conform with and certainly not exceed the maximum height requirement set forth in the zoning code. I mean, they're not here for a height variance.
Correct.
The plans that were presented conformed with the height regulations.
Conform with the zoning code.
There wasn't an issue with that, but we can certainly add that as a condition, that's a perfectly legitimate condition.
Would that be acceptable to you?
Yeah, and if the applicant doesn't have a problem with it, I don't think it'd be a problem.
Do you have, well, I guess what the attorney is saying basically is that as long as it's within, the height is within the zoning code, correct? Which is, what, thirty feet up here?
Forty, isn't it?
Forty. Okay, so are you willing to, to agree to that?
Yeah, and if we do...
It has to be, it has to be within the code anyway, no matter if you're willing to agree with it.
Right, it's gotta be within forty feet. I would say if we do it, say, at thirty feet maximum, then we're fine with it, but I don't want to be fighting over a half an inch.
Okay.
So I want a, a bit of leeway, so if we're gonna put that stipulation on it...
Why would we have to put it on it? According to the attorney, I guess as long as it's, it's just in the code.
I mean, we could, if you're comfortable with it, you know, the height of the modified structure for, but it will not exceed thirty feet.
Right.
If that's okay.
My client's fine with it.
Are you, are you happy with that?
Yeah, like I said, I just want a little bit of leeway, so...
And your applicant, Ms. Matero, are you happy with the thirty feet?
Yeah.
Okay, that's well within, that's well short of the town code.
Our plan is to do it as it's shown on there, but, you know...
Correct, okay, yes. You have a question? No?
I kind of reject that, because we just gave them three and a half more feet.
No, we didn't give them two. Well, they could take, they could take a lot more.
I know they can.
But so, so, you know, they're graciously accepting, graciously accepting the thirty to the thirty feet, so, and...
I don't understand why this person is dictating something that is within the town's code. You can't tell people that they can't do something that is within acceptability of the town's code because you don't like it.
Right. They could have made the roof line a lot higher if they chose to, when they chose to keep it gracious enough to choose to keep it, which they didn't have to do, okay? So, all right, this point, there's no other questions, or closed, we make a motion, close the public hearing? We're gonna cut in a second, close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This time, let's make a, make a motion on the appeal, and I guess the, it would be the thirty feet, which they agreed to, I guess, the thirty-foot height, would that be put in there?
Well, the applicants have said that they would agree that...
They don't have to agree.
That the construction that they're proposing...
Right.
Will not exceed thirty feet, and they would agree to that condition.
Okay, so...
Agreeable to it, you can do it.
Make a motion, take a vote. For...
If the applicant is agreeable to that, then I would say yes.
Yes, that's okay, well, yes.
So would I.
Okay, the second approved, and I approve. So the application's approved, and what happens now is our attorney makes up the resolution, okay? And then he's gonna put in a thirty-foot, you know, the height, which you agreed to and all that. So the building inspector across will be checking you on that, so if, you know, if you're gonna put a third story on, don't do it, you know, I'm just trying to say it. But, and that'll be next month's meeting. Next month is gonna be March fourteenth, that's will be the meeting, and attorney will bring us the application, the resolution, we'll review it, and then I'll sign it and give it to the building department, okay? And that's about it, right? For that one?
Very chump.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck, Melanie. Thank you.
I'm surprised.
Okay, next one is John and Sabatini, John and Kimberly Sabatini, appeal number eight-nine-one, for variance, applicant seeks relief from restriction of type of construction that can be built on slopes greater than twenty percent and greater than thirty-five percent. The applicant also seeks relief from the limitation on the maximum amount of impervious surface that exists on a lot, and it's a one-on-one Dix Castle Road in Garrison. Mr. Watson, want to give us this a brief overlay here? I know you gave it to us last month, but I just...
I'm not so sure I can be as brief as I can, but I'd like, you asked Mr. Caker to bring some of the architectural plans and explain those to you, and I would like to get into the meat of what, of the, of the variance, if that's okay.
These are for you.
Oh, thanks.
Smaller plans, so you can...
Oh, okay.
Pretty much what's on these boards.
Okay.
So as we decide, if you are required to show anything within three feet of the property lot, so if I'm surveying one person's property line and the house next door is three feet away, I have to show it. If I survey that piece of property and their house is ten feet away, I don't have to show it.
Okay, so three feet.
And that, and that's within the state guidelines, three feet, we generally are looking a little more than that, but that's, that's...
Okay, thank you. I didn't know that one.
Can you describe the inspector a little?
We got through it.
Yeah. If I may, I'll...
Go ahead. Bryce, could you just tell us who you are?
Yeah, I'm Justin Caker, architect from Highlands Architecture, called Spring. Our clients couldn't be here today, they, one's traveling on business and one's ill. They asked me to read this letter if I could.
Sure.
Dear Board, we are writing this letter because unfortunately neither of us are able to be in attendance for tonight's meeting. John's job has him traveling out of state, and I have an unpleasant plethora of germs that are not socially acceptable for polite company. While I was hoping to be in attendance this evening with so much coughing, sneezing, and sniffling, I felt absolutely sure you would prefer to hear from us from afar. If John and I had been able to speak to you directly this evening, we would have emphasized a couple of key things as you review our application. The first is that we are not only longstanding residents in the Hudson Valley, but we've also traveled the world while in the military. We've lived and been exposed to so many wonderful places, but when the time came to buy our forever home for our family, we chose Garrison. It was an easy choice because of the natural beauty of the area and the engaged community that it houses. We fell in love with our new home and its property, especially since it appeared we'd be able to add the additional indoor and outdoor space we'd been originally looking for. Knowing that our home was nestled in the middle of seven wooded acres left us comfortably believing that reasonable changes and additions to the inside and outside of our home and property wouldn't be a problem. We also wanted to stress, as we pursue architectural changes to our home and property, we've always felt it is tremendously important that our plans consider the well-being of the ecology, our close neighbors, and our community. We are clearly willing to go above and beyond to ensure that all choices and changes are both ecologically and aesthetically sound. It is our belief that our proposed plans fall squarely within those parameters and the aesthetics of our current neighborhood. Because of who we are, there is no other option for us other than to be innovative and environmentally sound. Keeping that in mind, when you look at the percentages in question and the small exception we are requesting, we hope you will take into account how we've already conducted ourselves in the process, our history with the property prior to zoning changes, and our proven record of following procedure and protocol. And please feel free to look upon me kindly for keeping my infectious germs tucked safely away in what we can only hope is our future construction site. Thank you so much for taking the time to consider our request, we appreciate it. Kim and John Sabatini.
She should win just on the letter alone.
I know, it's a good, she's a writer, so... I just wanted to briefly explain the architecture so you know what it is.
Sure.
The house is an existing single-family residence. The footprint of it is slightly over three thousand square feet, and we're adding a footprint of about fourteen eighty-seven. So this is the look we're going for, this is an existing part of the house, and there's the remaining part of the house, which is in your set of plans, is black and white elevations with dimensions on them. So you can see like the height on the low end, the low slope of this tower is thirty-eight ten to the top peak, so there's nothing that's going to exceed that height at all. So this is what it'll look like, it's primarily a timber frame construction, as you can see in your drawings. There's also some sheets in there which show photographs of the house and the property, and you can see if you've been there, or you can see in the photographs that there isn't a whole lot in the way of low slopes on the property other than the septic field.
Right.
There's a lot of exposed rock, there's a lot of slopes that are greater than twenty percent, which is our hardship with the seven-acre lot. So we don't see on any of the maps that we're in any ridge line blocking anyone's view. The neighbors have similar amenities that they're looking for, such as pools and tennis courts and things like that. We're proposing this addition, a free-form pool built into the hillside, and there are, I do have a section, a site section through there, so you can see sort of how steep the site is, and I don't know if the camera has seen that, but you can see the dotted line is the existing slope, and there's not a whole lot of cutting, and the terracing that we're planning on doing is going to be pervious, so with these retaining walls, and the pool will be a gunite type of pool. We're trying to limit the amount of trees we're cutting, and we need a construction-access road going up on the side to get to this part, to build the addition, and then sort of back out of that. We're hoping that it could become a driveway, but if it can't, when we're backing out after construction, we would bring it back to being pervious. So that's basically it for the architecture, I like to handle the engineering and the technical aspects of this.
Okay, thank you.
Drainage and erosion, erosion control.
Thank you. Well, basically what you're looking for us is for, you're still gonna have to go back to the planning board?
Yes.
Right, okay.
We had to go to the planning board for a special permit for the pool on a steep slope, and because our addition was exceeding one thousand square feet.
Okay.
I'm afraid this may get a little bit complicated, and I apologize, I apologize for that, but I think it may. The property we're speaking of is about seven acres, just a tad over seven acres, and it includes a significant portion of Dix Castle Road that passes through the property, it exists on both sides of the road. What needs to be understood is that the new zoning, it'll be new for the rest of my life, limits what you can build on slopes greater than twenty percent, and it further limits what you can build on slopes greater than thirty-five percent. So we have a piece of property, it's, you can see the area that we have that's under twenty percent is shown in white, and the area that is between twenty and thirty-five is the lighter gray, and the over thirty-five is the darker gray, so it'll get a little more stark if we color it. And, you know, same, same idea, the green is go, good for building, yellow is be cautious, and red is stop, so, so, and you can see that an awful lot of what we have here is inside the fifty-foot right-of-way for Dix Castle Road, so that sort of even strikes the balance, makes the balance a little more difficult. So essentially, to come back here, what we, the only place we could practically think, think about putting a pool would be in this flat area here, possibly across the street, we don't think that's a good idea, but we have a septic system there, so that knocks that out. It also makes us much more public and makes us much more visible to the neighbors. So the point that was chosen, and I didn't have much to do with that, but I think wisely so, was on the north side of the building, so that the Cavaliers, Preska's tennis court and stuff would not be affected by it, and avoided us going deeply into the rock on the north side, so that's why this area was chosen. Unfortunately, most of the area is either over thirty-five or over twenty percent. Incidentally, the driveway is something that could be built in the twenty percent, and I talked to you about this last month, I showed you a different driveway that came up and swung to the south, and this one swings to the north, but if you look at this, you'll see much more of that is in the under twenty percent slope. So we're seeking that relief. Now, I've got some, a couple of things I want to go over in a second. What's the more difficult part about it is the percent of impervious coverage, we're limited to a maximum of ten, and last week we told you, last month we told you that it was, we had something slightly over ten, and we're gonna go to something slightly over eleven. We did some more topo, we did some more looking, and to be perfectly frank, the section of the code that defines that gives you about at least three ways to define it, I've been do, to calculate it. I've been doing it for a long time. Fellow who did it, every, three people did it in the office, we came up with four separate answers. It was, it's just very difficult. And the odd thing about it, if you look at note eight in the, in the use table, it says that if you have a non-conforming lot, you're exempt from the requirement. We are not a non-conforming lot, and that particular element, the impervious coverage for pre-existing lot, is not one of the elements that is, is among the tests for whether or not you're a conforming or non-conforming lot. Area... Area and all that stuff that normal is a test. But that is not a test. Had we been, had a four-acre lot, we wouldn't have to concern ourselves with that requirement. So, it seems to be perfectly frank, it seems to me a little backwards that if we have a big enough lot, we can't put on this extra building. If we had a lot that was non-conforming and smaller, we could do it without even coming here. So, to be perfectly frank, it's very difficult to conceive how that works. And I took the time, I talked to an attorney friend of mine who does land use, Rick O'Rourke from White Plains. Just, I got him on the phone for free. And then I called Joel Russell, who wrote the law. And we were a little hedging of the bets there in our discussion, so. So we're asking relief so that we can build what we're showing you here, this 1,000-foot free-form pool, the 1,480-plus addition. Our decks will be such that they will not count because they will be not considered impervious material. The pools around and a lot of this stuff will be impervious. So we're trying to minimize it to the greatest extent possible. To be, the worst-case situation is that we have nine and we're going to 14. But, again, I could argue back to the other, the other extreme.
What percentage of impervious are you looking for?
Enough to build this building.
And what number would that be?
Well, in the worst-case situation, taking the worst-case situation, having us, the least that we could calculate it now, we're 9.3%, which is under the minimum 10. And the worst case, if we calculate everything, the worst way we can, we come up 14.8. So, on the whole, it's 4.8 plus 0.7, it's 5.4, 4.8 plus 7, 5.5.
So basically, you're looking for three variances, right?
No.
No?
Two.
Two?
Two. One...
The 20%?
To construct the, these buildings in the 20 and 35% slope. I guess you could look at it as one for the 20 and one for the 35.
Okay.
But it's essentially the same elements.
Okay.
Building on a steep slope.
Right.
And then the impervious coverage percent. Just asking you to take, and just asking you to take note of the fact that if we were a much smaller non-conforming lot, we would be exempt from the requirement. And these very difficult calculations.
I'm just saying, in terms of, should the, when the board prepares its ultimate resolution, we just would need to say, "The applicant is proposing impervious surfaces in the amount of blank," and so the board will...
Well, to be safe, it would be 14.
14.8?
Not to exceed 14.8.
14.8%?
14.8?
Yeah.
Okay.
We would not exceed that.
So I took, so... I'm usually much more definite about my ideas about things, but to be perfectly frank, this has confused me. And it's confused several people in the office. And a couple of people outside the office. But any rate, I took a look at the five-pronged tests. And I know that's in your questions, and I gave something of an answer to that in the application. But I'd like just to go through, and I will hand this in, whether, one of the first tests is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting of the area variance. And my response is, an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood will not occur. This is because the lots in the neighborhood, including the Sabatinis, are large and the houses are spaced far from each other. Moreover, when constructed, the Sabatinis' house, although large, by some standards, will be just about the same, just about the average for the neighborhood.
Right. I did, I went over there and I looked, and I did have some big homes there, that's for sure.
Whether the benefit sought by the applicant, the appellant, I should say, can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, repellent to pursue, and then an area variance. The benefit sought by the applicant is to have the house large enough to raise their children and with an out, small outdoor family area for them all to enjoy. This cannot be achieved without constructing on steep slopes because most of the lot is steep. And those areas of the lot that are not steep are unsuitable or unavailable. They are unsuitable because they would be open to and obvious to, and remote from the house, and would be very obvious to the neighbors. They are unavailable because the only available space is already improved with a septic system. Whether the requested variance is substantial, in terms of sheer numbers, it's substantial. However, when viewed in terms of the size of the home that will be built, they are not. This is especially true when one considers that the lot is large and located among equally large lots. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect, effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. The proposed variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. The variances will not result in excessive construction or a substantial increase in population of the area. There will be an increase in the stormwater runoff, but the applicant's site plan includes both permanent and temporary stormwater facilities. There will be no increase in traffic or population. There will be no increase in demand for water or septic flows. There will be a small loss of tree cover, but the applicants will be landscaping the disturbed areas. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the Board of Appeals, but not, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the variance. Well, the simple answer is, the variance sought is to allow something to happen, not to remedy a violation. Accordingly, it's, this difficulty is not self-created. Or needs may have created it, and you could go roundabout. But basically, we're not really here saying, forgive me. We're here saying, please.
Correct. It's not like you built a deck too close to the property and you're here for that.
Exactly. So I have copies of this, which, a little more factual stuff added to it.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
What, the stormwater runoff facilities that you mentioned, the temporary and permanent ones, could you describe how you're gonna handle the additional stormwater?
Well, first thing in the plan, as I mentioned a couple of times, and Justin mentioned it, is the fact that we're gonna be using as much impervious, a pervious material as possible, which will... There are things called pervious pavers, which I'm sure you've heard of. But they basically allow the water to infiltrate, even though it's a paved surface, the water goes through the pavers. So that one thing. Over here, we're going to catch, we have a rain garden here, which will capture the water. Basically, it makes a temporary pond that fills up during a storm. And rather than run away and erode stuff, it allows the water to seep in. And at the same time, it filters the water as it's going through the ground, much like a septic system filters the effluent from the house. We're hoping we're gonna do a little bit more of that over there in the same area by the driveway. And the temporary stuff is really standard stuff, erosion control fences and all that sort of stuff that happens during, during normal construction.
So, I mean, I know it's a very large lot. It's seven acres. And I, so the next house is probably pretty far away. So, but there's, so there's no possibility of any stormwater runoff into anybody else's property from this project?
We think we will have it well-controlled here. The nearest house is here, and the water is going this way. The nearest house that way. I think I reported that to you last year. I think it's about 1,100 to 1,200 feet. So, I mean, there's water running off that property now during a storm. We think we'll be, we believe we'll be able to control, control it so there won't be anything significant increase in it. And we'll be counterbalancing it over here to reduce stuff.
Okay. So it'd actually be improving the runoff?
I don't, to be perfectly frank, I don't think that's... I think what we're trying to do is...
Detain it?
Maintain it, yeah.
Okay, okay. Any questions? How would this be worded, I guess is my question? How would it be wording this resolution?
Well, I mean, they're seeking variances to allow construction on, you know, specified grades that limit what you can build. And they also want a variance to the maximum amount of impervious surfaces.
Okay. So basically, two, two variances. Could we do that, could we do that in one resolution?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. One thing I just wanted to clarify, just in terms of the resolution, you're seeking a 1,487-foot addition on a steep slope?
Yes.
And the placement of a pool approximately 1,000 feet on a steep slope?
Correct. Yes.
The driveway is, are you seeking a variance to reconfigure or to place a driveway? And if you are, is that a permanent or temporary driveway?
We are able to, we're, this will be able to be permanent. The driveway can go on the 20% slope. So, most of that driveway does not need a variance. This little bit over here needs a variance because it's on the 35% slope. But, and the driveway, this is also a very strange thing. The driveway, you see how we hatch the driveway here and hatch the driveway here? None of that counts as impervious slope. Only thing that counts is the first 100 feet. And, to be perfectly frank, it seems backwards to me. But that's what the rules say. And, so, we are seeking to build a total of 8,725 square feet of human, human-installed stuff. That includes some retaining walls, it includes the driveway, it includes the addition to the house, it includes the pool, includes the patio area around the pool.
Okay.
So, a portion of the driveway is on a slope that's 35% or more?
Right here.
So you would need a, per the plan, you would need a variance to place a driveway with one portion of the driveway on a slope that is, on a slope that exceeds 35%?
That's correct.
Okay.
Glenn, why wouldn't you move that?
It seems like you're really close to not being on the 35. Why not just move it to be out of the 35? The driveway, I mean.
Well...
Because it looks like you're hooking in there. Just change the shape of the hook.
There are, there is horizontal and vertical alignment to be considered. And, and we'll take another look at that, to be perfectly frank. But, but if I, if I come in here, I shorten the length of the driveway. And when I shorten the length of the driveway, I increase the percent of grade that I, just because I have, it's just a straight percentage. You know, if I have less of a base, I'm gonna have a higher percent of grade. So, part of the routing of the driveway has to do with making it long enough to overcome the grade with an acceptable driving surface.
So you're trying to make it less steep?
Less steep, yes. Right.
If you, if you granted this, you have to go back, what do you have to go back to the planning board for?
We have to go back to the planning board to complete site plan approval. That site plan, they've been out there twice and walked on it twice. Site plan approval will address the grade of the driveway, will address the erosion control, temporary and permanent erosion control measures.
Right.
It will, they are particularly concerned, for this project, and they both said it, and both site visits, they're particularly concerned to know that we've only taken out the minimum number of trees. We've had to do a tree survey, which is very unusual in Phillips Town. And there's, I think that's probably it.
Probably fair.
Probably it.
Can I just ask, the small amount of driveway that's going over the area that's above 35% in grade, what problems would that present normally, you know?
Well, I, the philosophy of the whole thing is that the steeper the grade of the land, the more difficult it is to do construction, the more threatened and damage to the, there's more damage to the environment threatened by that activity. If we, if we hit rock here, short ways down, and there's every indication we're going to, I mean, it's gonna be a very stable thing. But if it were, if it were sand, mountain of sand, it would be a different story, but we, so...
How large is the area that is above 35% in grade?
I have to eyeball guess that one. This is 30 scale, that's probably an inch and a half by 10. It's probably 450 square feet, something like that.
So you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to go back to us for another variance for the driveway?
No, no, we're talking about that.
Are we talking about to cover that? Okay.
This, and, and... The way it works is, the distance between the lines, these heavier contour lines, that's a 10-foot rise.
It's less than one, let me just check that, I checked myself on it. Are they two for, two for intervals? I think they're twos, but I'm not certain. I wanted to check. Of course, they didn't... One thing that we did in our site walks was, the first driveway that we had laid out went the other way. It sort of went up by the septic field and turned back. We found that that driveway was much steeper than this one.
Okay.
So, the very beginning, it's steep, and then it levels out and gets to more like 15, 18%, I believe, on the last run. So, there was a slightly more area of disturbance with this driveway, but it's a lot less steep.
Okay.
When we had it over here, there was much more disturbance in terms of construction and protecting the septic system. We had to build additional retaining walls, and we had to be very careful because of the spacing requirements.
And when you walk this, the way this is going, if you were to walk the site, you'll realize, Glenn noticed it right away because I had drawn the driveway this way. He saw an opportunity to go this way because it was just sort of a natural way to get up.
Up the property itself, yeah.
Yeah, and it went around a large rock outpropping without having to move it. And the Sabatinis liked that too, because the driveway went up and around it to keep some of the natural features there. And this is a much better driveway than the original one that we had.
Okay. About the pool, how many gallons does, will it hold, approximately?
It's about 860 square feet area. And its deepest end is gonna be about nine feet deep with an infinity edge. So I, I don't know the calculation of the volume of it, but...
Approximately 30,000 gallons.
That's pretty good. I would have to, okay, it's a free-form pool.
4,000 cubic feet? Was it 800 square feet?
It was 860, I believe.
It's like 900, and how deep is it?
At the deepest, about nine feet on the lower end.
On the upper end?
It goes all the way to like a little waiting area.
So, so, so it's from zero to, so it's four and a half feet deep, five feet deep, times 900 is 4,500, 4,500 cubic feet, times seven. Roughly seven, right? 28,000.
Yeah, 28,000, I did a quick number, 30,000.
Pretty good.
A lot of, a lot of water. My concern is, on the likely event that the pool would collapse, the water's gonna go whoosh.
Yeah. Structural engineer, we already have on board to design the structure on the front end of the pool. Rainbow Pools would be building the pool. And we looked at one in Beacon that was done. It was a little smaller, but it was on a steeper slope and much taller on the low end. And that was designed by a structural engineer that we know, reinforced concrete in the front before they do the gunite pool. So the whole idea is it's structurally engineered on that lower end.
Yep. Who's below you? Is there anybody below you?
You go down, and there's a trench, and there's the road, and then it's way down, and there's...
You know, are you familiar with Fine Place?
Yeah.
It's, Fine Place is the road below us, and there are three or four houses down there. And they're, I think the closest one I said before, I think it's 1,100 feet.
Yeah, because I was hoping that the catch basins that you're, that you're planning could catch the majority of that if it should happen. I know it's unlikely. But unlikely things do happen. I know it's unlikely, but unlikely things do happen.
Yeah, I understand. Well, there is a spillway and a recirculating, there'll be a recirculating pump. As far as drainage and catch basins, that's something that's already been designed. But not for that.
My, 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 just seat-of-the-pants reaction to that is you'd be better off letting it spread out than trying to capture it all and putting and overloading a system.
Well, I was just concerned. Of the neighbors.
Sure.
You know, not as much that it wouldn't run out into the field.
If you look straight down the hill, Fine Place is actually a little further to the north as you drive down the road. So not really sure who's down below the road.
Yeah.
So if the water were to go down and go over the road, there's not a house nearby straight down below the pool.
Right.
Fine Place is a little bit further over to the right.
I'm sure the planning board will think of that.
The planning board, the planning board will address that.
The south, yeah, to the south of Fine Place, it's, that's, that's that swamp, that, that's the wetland.
Yeah.
Perfect.
It's the wetland. There's a little old white house that the, that the Barlow's own. That's up on a rise. There's, it drops down and it goes into that marshy area, of course, from St. Basil's.
Okay, great.
Just two. As I understand the map, is the entirety of the pool on a slope that's graded twenty percent grade or greater?
Most of the pool is on thirty-five percent.
Okay. And with respect to the addition, is any of that on a defined steep slope as well?
It's all on, all of it, all of it is on the defined steep slope. The addition's on twenty percent.
Okay.
The pool is on thirty-five percent.
Or greater. Okay.
Okay. Any questions? Anybody else? Anybody in the audience have any questions? Now, we noted there's nobody.
No audience.
Nobody in the audience has any questions I have to ask. So how would this be worded, I guess? If I pass this, if I ask for a vote on this, how would, exactly what would it be worded?
Well, I mean, resolutions would be prepared.
Right.
It would be a, a resolution to permit construction of various improvements, including a driveway in addition to the existing single-family dwelling in a pool on a steep slope.
That's approved by the planning board.
Right.
As, as defined by the code.
Right.
And then the application would go back to the planning board.
Okay. Okay, okay. I make a motion this time we close the public hearing?
Second.
Second? All right, okay. Now, as far as make a motion for the vote on, let's vote on the application, vote on the wording of. I'm not going to go throw that again. What he said.
You know, I would like to vote in favor of this. I'm a little bit concerned about whatever houses may be below. And I have a personal experience like with, with this kind of thing. I live on Gallows Hill Road and above me is Aqueduct Road. And it's, it is a steep slope between Aqueduct and my house. And years ago, I heard this whooshing sound. I go out to look, is it raining? And it, and it wasn't raining and I stepped off my deck and there was four feet of water there from a pool from above. And that's.
I think it's small, I think you're on a smaller piece of property.
Yeah. I know, I know. But I, I, I just, I guess I would like to be assured that there isn't any house in the direct.
Right in distance.
Well, I think, I think you could express that concern. I mean, I don't know what kind of pool was, if it was an above-ground pool that somebody put in sloppily and they bought it with Sears for forty-nine ninety-five.
Yeah, they might have.
That's what we're not going to have.
And, but amazingly, it didn't do any damage to my house because my house is also on a slope, you know? And it just ran past it, but.
Like I said, it's at least a thousand, it's at least a thousand feet. And I think more to the nearest house.
Plus the seven acres on it there.
So you know, too, the, the neighbor above the Sabatini's, if you're standing in their driveway and you look up, they have a pool on a steep slope as well. So if their pool goes.
Everybody goes, the whole thing's, the whole neighborhood goes, right? All the pools go.
So I think they're all kind of living with that.
I guess we're ready to take a vote on this at this point in time. Everybody has enough information.
I guess.
Mrs. Sisom?
Vote, I vote in favor.
Vote in favor?
I vote in favor.
I vote in favor. I vote in favor. So it'll be prepared in next month of fourteenth, March fourteenth, as they give this to us and that's when we'll sign it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. As far as the minutes, we have, luckily, Kim has given us a hand to clean up these minutes. These minutes go back from February of fifteen. So Mr. Lim is not here tonight. So probably what I'm going to do is.
I, I wouldn't vote on this because I wasn't here.
Yeah, you weren't here. So what I'll do is I'll push that over to the next meeting on the fourteenth. We'll approve the meeting on the next day. At the March fourteenth, Monday, March fourteenth. Okay, is there any old business, any new business? You okay? Adam, good? I make a motion, we adjourn?
Second.
All right. Thank you.